Good evening and welcome to the April ninth regular meeting of the Scarborough, town Scarborough zoning board of appeals, the Division Colorado Board. The meeting is being recorded as in traditional phase meetings, we will hear each appeal in order after first reviewing prior appeals to have a final ruling effect. We, the meeting is recorded and we will, to the extent needed, limit public discussion if we have a lot of it. Otherwise, we will allow as much as we can, we try to be respectful of everybody's time. With that, if I could ask everybody to stand and say a quick name? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And you could, Doreen, call the roll and announce any...
Oh.
That will help and I apologize.
Oh, here you go.
My voice carries in the room, so it's just... Doreen, if we could call the roll.
Peter Freylinger.
Here.
Kyle Lunin.
Here.
David Bort.
Here.
Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
And Joe Dory.
Here. And I believe James will be elevated as a voting member today, or is that right?
Joe.
Joe, sorry. Joe.
Yeah.
But is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Then from that, if I could, we have the minutes from the last meeting, the March 12th meeting. I was not there for that meeting, so I will not vote on these minutes, but have we had a chance to review them?
Yes.
I'm seeing some nods. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, David.
So moved.
Thank you, David.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Kyle, any discussion? Not seeing any. If I could see a vote by show of hands, that's a unanimous vote for the approval of the minutes. Thank you very much. The first of our action items tonight is the approval of the findings of fact and decision in appeal number 2768 by Coastal Remedies, Chris McNeil for Three Commercial Road. Again, I was not here for any, and I'll say this ahead of time, I was not here for the March 12th meeting in general, so I'll read these out, but I will not be voting to approve the findings of fact. Has everyone had a chance to review the final findings of fact? Seeing that, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
David, so moved. A second?
A second.
Thanks, Joe. And could I see a show of hands for approval of the final findings of fact? That is three and any against?
I'm a no.
You're a no. Got it. So that is a three to one vote for the approval of findings of fact decision. By a three to one vote, that action item is, that appeal is approved. For a decision 20, or for appeal 2770, variance appeal, five mores, Point Road, again, an approval of the written decision and final findings of fact. Has everyone had a chance to read that?
Indeed.
Do I see a motion to approve?
So moved.
David, thank you very much. Motion second?
I second.
Thank you. Kyle, any discussion? Seeing none, could I see a show of hands for approval? That is four to nothing. That is approved. The next item is appeal number 2771, limited reduction of yard size residential appeal at One Snow Road. Again, approval of the written decision heard at the March 12th meeting. Does everyone, has everyone had a chance to read that?
Yes.
Yes, I'm seeing nods. Could I see a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. David?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Kyle, could I see a show of hands for approval? That is unanimous, four nothing. Appeal 2771 is approved. We next move to tonight's business. The first item is 2769. Question, this seems out of order numerically. Is that anything?
It's held over from last month.
It was held over from last month. Thank you very much. Again, was not here last month. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. So we will enter into 2769, a special exception appeal by Timothy Morris at 18 Asland Drive, et cetera, et cetera. As this was held over, if we could have Mr. Morris or his representative, peer?
Mr. Chair, if I may just kind of tee this one up.
Sure, of course.
Since you weren't here, and I'd invite any of the board members to add to my, my sort of recount of what took place and where we are in that process. So Mr. Morris went through his, his application. There was much discussion, there were quite a few public comments written, there wasn't, I don't believe anyone here in person, correct me if I'm wrong.
Nobody. That's right.
Then there was some deliberation. There's, long story short, I think everything was, was going pretty, pretty much the way you would expect. The, the items were, each of the criteria were being addressed, but then it came to the public safety, no greater need for public safety, and there was quite a big concern about the beekeeping aspect of the application. And that's kind of where it became evident that the board was uncomfortable with that aspect of it. There was a lot of questions that we didn't really have answers to. For example, the town is silent on the beekeeping aspect, and as far as we can determine, anyone can have a bee, bee hive, be a beekeeper on their lot because we don't address it in one way, shape, or form. It's not a prohibited activity and it's not anything that, that we address. So, given that, the question seemed to be, well, if, if the pollination part of that is not a problem, but the honey, if it's sold as part of the commercial agriculture, and the whole purpose for the commercial agriculture was to be able to sell products outside of the property at a farmer's market, or market them to grocery stores, or whatever. So that's kind of where everything kind of hit a, a brick wall. And, and so, in, 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 I'm, I'm searching for the words. Because of that, the applicant obviously came back with a lot of information, as you can see in your packet or on, on the agenda. I also got statements from both public safety and fire department, ambulance service, that they had not had any uptick or any cases that involve bee stings. There was a, a question put to the town attorney as to whether or not, you know, for guidance for the board, you know, how does he look at that? And, and he says, yeah, he feels that the, and all of this is in my, my staff comments, but, but for the public's benefit, he feels that the honey, the sale of honey could certainly be an aspect of the commercial agriculture. On the other hand, you could give honey away as part of, of your keeping of the bees, which you're allowed to do. You could also sell it right there on site, but that's not what the applicant wants to do because he doesn't want to generate traffic at the residence. So, that's kind of where things left. The board invited the applicant to, to table at that point and, and so that we could get some of these answers, and that's kind of where things, things left off. And I don't know if the board has anything that they'd like to add to that, if that's an unfair characterization of what happened.
Just one further clarification point on that. There wasn't a vote taken on item two, which is the public safety issue, which is a two true tie, which means that the application would have failed. So at that point, you know, the board made a decision to give the applicant the opportunity to come back again, put another crack at it, so to speak, and table it. So that's, that's the only thing that would have happened. That's, it's a process issue.
And again, my, my question is more about processes. It, it, it is about having started the, the, the vote process and then table it and come back. My sense is that we should start from ground zero.
In terms of reviewing each of the criteria?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we only got on to the third one.
Yeah, so... Starting from ground zero also involves having the applicant give an update and/or give a, a review and having the public have a chance to comment as well, so.
Well, you know, I, for what it's worth, I, I think, I think the only part of the materials that we've received that are different relate to the bees. Is that correct?
That is incorrect.
Okay. Well then, maybe we should. I was gonna, I was trying to shortcut this and just, just go straight to the bees, but, you know.
I'm gonna use that line sometime in the future. I want to go straight to the bees as well. But, but I appreciate that, Colin, and that, that makes sense. And, and part of it for me is more of a process. When things are tabled, I generally view them when they come back, we kind of start from ground zero, and we start the process as if we were hearing it anew, not just as a delta to what we had heard prior, so. But if, and Brian, I'm kind of looking at you, is, is that a correct understanding of the process here, or is that, is that a not incorrect understanding of process?
I think that's up to the board to, the board and the chair to determine if that's the way they want to proceed.
David?
Absolutely. I'd just like to throw in my two cents worth here.
Sure.
I think it's totally appropriate to give the members of the audience the opportunity to comment, and obviously the applicant to give a general statement upfront.
Yeah.
You know, prior to going through each of the criteria.
Okay.
And at that point too, we can ask questions of the applicant before we get into reviewing the questions.
Yep, of course. And, and again, that's what I think of as starting at ground zero. We kind of view this as if we were to have him start for the first time, so, or he or she, I should say. It happens to be a he, but it, it, I'm already dug myself too deep on that one. Okay, Mr. Morris, if you could state your name, your location here in town, and then give a general overview of your appeal, of your request for appeal.
Okay, great. So just to, just from my own understanding, I'm going to give a quick statement, you're going to give the public time to talk, and then we'll go through each item individually.
No, we'll give you a chance to talk. We'll then ask you some questions, general questions that we might have about your general presentation. We'll then give the public a chance to talk, and then we'll go, we'll close public conversation, comment at that point, and then we'll go through the individual items for us to review to make findings of fact.
Sounds good. My name is Timothy Morris. I live at 18 Asland Drive here in Scarborough. The special use exemption I submitted is in regards to starting a small micro farm, as it were, on our property. So the major intention behind this submission, everything we're doing is already compliant with current town acceptable use. Gardening is allowable in Town of Scarborough, beekeeping is allowable in Town of Scarborough. We're not doing anything new in those regards. The flowerbeds already existed, as if, the bee hive now already exists, everything is already there. The intention for this is we don't want to have any more traffic on our street. As I'm sure my neighbors are going to tell you, we live on a very small, quiet road, we have a lot of kids that play, a lot of dogs, we all really enjoy the fact that it's a quiet, like, it's like you rolled the clock back to 1980 kind of neighborhood. It's amazing. It's one of the reasons we love living in Scarborough. No one wants that to change. Currently in R2, I'm allowable to sell excess product from my lot. I don't want to do that. I want to be able to take it to the farmer's market here in town. Oak Hill Hanaford has expressed strong interest in buying direct from us. I've had a couple other businesses in town express the same thing. We want to be able to sell to them. However, currently, we cannot do that with our zoning. So this application is just to get permission to sell offsite.
Just to be clear, you can't do it under existing zoning without the special exception?
Yes, sir.
That's right. Okay. Yeah, just to be clear, because if you can't do it with, if, if no special exception exists for you to do that, then this is a moot issue, obviously.
Right. If special exemption exists for us to do it, that's what we're here for today.
Got it. Okay. Cool. Anything else?
That's the highlight of it. I mean, if you want to talk about the nitty gritty of what we're planning to do for the farm, happy to talk about it, but in respect of everyone's time, I...
We appreciate that. So with that, let me open up to questions from, general questions from the, the board.
Sure. Mr. Morris, do you plan to sell honey at all?
As of right now, yes, we do plan to sell honey. However, we need to get further permitting and application, depending on how we're going to sell that honey. So that's pending.
If we were to approve it?
I'm sorry?
If we were to approve this, it is your intention to sell honey?
If you were to approve it, it is my intention to seek the applications and continue the permitting process to be able to sell the honey. Yes.
Thank you. All right, so, all right, with that in mind then, can you tell us a little bit about the main beekeepers association's criteria for density of, of bee hives?
Absolutely. Let me flip to that page. So if you all are following along in your documentation, it is the MSBA best practices guideline. So your question is particularly in regard to density?
Mm-hmm.
So this is a recommendation put out by the Main State Beekeepers Association. This is...
Do you know the page that was, the page number for that?
I think it was page 90, but I may be wrong.
Um, right there, in that reference, it has the page number. So, yeah, page 88 would be your page there.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
So in that document, I am on page three, so that would be page 91 for you all following along at home. So in regards to hive densities, now again, this is explicitly a recommendation. This isn't a hard fast rule, a lot of this, if we go into, if you want to dig through some of these books, we can, beekeeping best practices, it, it's determined on hive behavior characteristics, things like that, how the lot is set up. However, the recommendation is on a lot size up to a quarter acre, which is what we would be considered, we can have up to two colonies. As of right now, we have one. We may grow to two, we may not. We're going to see how one works.
Would you ever consider going past two?
Not without careful consulting, consulting the main state apiarist and another authority on it to be able to speak to when it would be appropriate to go past two per these guidelines.
On, on a quarter acre lot, in fact, just slightly below a quarter of an acre?
Like I said, if we were to ever do that, I would be consulting someone first before doing that, the person who wrote these guidelines. I would be talking to them on when that would be permissible or allowable, but no, sir, it is not my intention to go against these recommendations as written.
So you, you're stating right now then that you intend to follow the, the guidelines of the main beekeepers association?
It is my intention to follow the recommendations given to me and treat them as recommendations as they are written, sir. Yes.
And again, for the boards, you know, I think Brian mentioned this, there are no guidelines at all in Scarborough.
There are no formal guidelines, correct, sir?
But there are, you know, a professional association, okay, which to me, that carries a lot of weight.
Yes, sir.
Regardless of what Scarborough has on the, on their books or not, this is really irrelevant to me.
Yes.
But yeah, I'm glad to hear that you intend to follow the guidelines, and that's good. Thank you. So I have...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Do you know why there is a recommendation per half quarter, or per, what was it, sorry, per quarter acre, two hives? Like, what is the detriment of having three? I'm just curious. I...
There is no explicit, there is no explicit detriment. So when you talk about colony densities, there's a lot of considerations to factor. So robbing behavior is one. So basically what that means is if you have one weak hive, a stronger hive might come and continue to weaken that other hive by taking the honey out of it. So in those kinds of considerations, you may want it to be smaller. Other considerations would be placement on the lot. So all lots are different. Under a quarter acre could be anything from my lot in Asland Drive to an apartment in the Downs. Urban beekeeping encompasses all those kind of situations. Rooftop hives are extremely common. The Main State Children's Museum has a hive on top of their building as an example. So when they set that guideline, they need to make it as a, like, one case fits all. And if you're thinking in case of like a studio apartment on your back porch, more than two hives would, would be a lot in that kind of situation. So not everybody can do things like what we're doing. So on our lot, we have a substantial setback from the street where the hives are going to be. We have physical barriers. If, you all read, I put a really cool study in here that a Japanese university did regarding barriers, and if you read that, it talks about different uses of even just lattice and how that can affect where the bees can go and how. But not everybody has the opportunity for that on their land, so that's why some of these recommendations are different from what I've read. I'm sure there are other factors, but those are the ones that I know of.
Thank you.
I have a question. Do you know, there are a lot of beekeepers in Scarborough?
There are, yes, I have that number if you'd like it.
Well, I'm actually curious about, do you know if any of them have, do you have any comparison of number of colonies per, per acre or per, for that?
I'd be happy to speak to that, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
So when this initially came up, after last meeting, I reached out to, was reached out to by several beekeepers in the town. One person informed me that a recommend, recommendable number of hives for me would be four, based on beekeeping best practices. So that allows, and really, it's four plus a few, because it's four, like, traditional large colonies plus a few nucks. And that's, that's in order to properly balance hive losses over the winter. In case y'all didn't see in the news, over the last winter, we lost 70% of the bees in the country.
Yep.
It's going to be extremely detrimental to agriculture this year. So in order to stave some of that, he recommends keeping more. I reached out to my mentor who keeps bees here in Scarborough. I believe she's on a, I think she said half acre lot. I could be wrong, but I know she keeps six hives. And we're starting with one. I'll talk a little bit later about some of the conversations I've had with neighbors, but we very intentionally chose to start with one, accepting that we may lose the hive over the winter, and in that case, what, what I mean is the bees may just die in the hive over the winter, and we wouldn't have a backup, but we're willing to accept that risk in part of this neighbor community balance that we're trying to strike.
Perfect. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions, Joe?
Just a, a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
Is, is there a state level sort of, there's a license you need?
Yes, sir.
To get? Can you talk about, and, and annual inspections, which I seem to have seen somewhere in background documents as well? So you've already got the license with the state?
License has been applied for. I'm waiting for the state to process it, but it's not, it's more unless you pay a fee. It's like when you register a car, the state doesn't really say it's lesser than when you register, because like registering your dog, you kind of just show up and you pay for it, except they have the ability to come and inspect me. So the state is currently understaffed. They have one and a half people doing inspections, so right now, they're trying to get to everybody, but I have assurance from Ms. Lund that if I request an inspection, she will inspect me, and it is my intention to always request an inspection. I'm new to this. I want to make sure I'm doing everything right. If you read through some of the documentation in here on American foulbrood, it's a pretty nasty disease that would affect other hives in the area if I have it and I'm not aware of it. I always want to make sure I'm not causing any detriment to anyone else. So making sure those proper inspections are there is something that's pretty important to me, so we'll be keeping up on that.
Okay. Thank you. And just one, one, one follow-up. I was reading a little bit about, there was quite a, quite a bit of information about bees and water.
Yes, sir.
They, they use it to keep the hive cool.
Yeah.
In the summer, right?
Absolutely.
And, and talked about the various sources of water that the bees might go to.
Mm-hmm.
Pools and hot tubs and things of this nature being sort of one area that they might gravitate towards. So can you talk to any steps that you're helping, that you're taking or will take to sort of keep, keep the bees, a source of water for the bees?
Absolutely. So wait, the document in question in the application is called Water Foraging by Honeybees. It is towards the end of the application, and in this document, what it talks about, there's a few big things I'd like to pull out of it. So it talks about what kind of water do bees prefer. They prefer water that's close to the hive. So I just want to start out by just keeping that in mind. They, they prefer dirty water for the minerals. So this is in nature, it's rainwater, it's water with dirt in it, and artificial, more, artificial is the wrong word, but in a residential setting, it could be a pool. It could be, depending on the type of pool, and it's also, there's a lot of factors that would attract them to a pool or not. And then they like going to the same spots, so things that are reasonably there. So the problem with pools and that is people cover their pools. So there are times of the year when bees can't get to them, even if it's just a solar cover that's enough to throw them off, or just the winter cover. And then when we talk about how many bees, so when we talk about bees attracted to water, the image in people's head is that my entire hive wants to go attack the neighbor swimming pool. That's not the case. So bees through the course of their life cycle have different roles, and the water foraging part of the bee hive is extremely small. It's 1% of the bees in the hive are ever actually looking for water. But they also prefer to collect, those bees are looking for the water that's closest to the hive. So with all that said, I'll talk about what I've done in particular. So if you're looking at the map, which I believe is attachment 21 of my lot, it identifies where the apiary is. So in that yellow section, I'm so sorry, Brian, I'm jumping around a lot. In that yellow section is where the bees will live. So in there, it's a 220 square foot area of the lot. It takes up, I believe, 2% of my actual lot size, but anyway, thank you. So that yellow area, that is where the hive is now. In that area, we've also dug a pond. The pond is two feet by three feet. It's naturally fed by rainwater. It's eight inches deep to prevent evaporation. We have heat pumps on our home, so the heat pump condensate is also directed into that, into that pond now, and that's to ensure that always stays full and never goes away. Because again, it's that, like, the source has to always be there. And that source is, if you're, the way I have my hive positioned, it is directly out in front of it, so the bees will see it soon as I place them in there. In addition to that, there is a birdbath in that same area that's intentionally being set up as well to water the bees. There's also just outside that yellow block, outside that first little red dot, is a water fountain that we have, and that is pre-existing. It was there for ornamental purposes, but it's also going to serve as yet another backup water source. So I'm providing the bees three different opportunities. I've sourced corks for the bees to perch themselves on, to be able to drink out of the water. We're intentionally putting plants around the pond for that purpose as well. I've also talked to several of my neighbors with pools when we did our canvassing about this particular issue, because at the end of the day, this is, everything I've found, this is people's, and talking to the main state apiarist, this ends up being people's biggest concern. Anyone who I talked to with a pool did not have an issue. I will say, one of our neighbors who has a pool asked if he'd be mad if he drowned my bees if they came to his pool, and I informed him I would not be pursuing any legal action if he drowned any of my bees in his pool. So that was it. But we're taking every precaution to prevent that, and I have informed them, as I have with anyone who I've talked to, that if they're having an issue with the bees, please talk to me. I've provided my cell phone number, I've provided my address, I've provided two forms of social media to reach out to me on. I'm vigilant on all those sources. I'm a, I'm a photographer as well, so I'm a small business owner that has to be constantly monitoring everything, and I've assured people that if they're having a problem, I will work with them to address it.
Thank you.
Can I jump in with a quick question?
Absolutely.
How long have you folks had bees on your lot?
There are no bees currently. The hive is there. The bees will be in town first week of May, weather permitting.
I see. Okay. And is the hive the same as a colony?
No. So a colony refers to, a colony is a pack of dogs. A hive is the cave the dogs live in, if you want to think of it that way.
Understood.
It's like ants, actually, same terminology. Yeah.
Any other general questions for the applicant?
Okay, so you know, I'd like to open the, if you'd have a seat, you might be asked to come back up to answer questions, but...
Is it okay if I leave my materials here?
Yeah. No one's going to knock them off or, thanks very much.
Thank you.
But I'd like to open this up to, before we do public comment in the room, just want to cover it because it's a little easier to do right now. Any additional public comments that we received by email or phone call or anything?
Oh, yeah. Too numerous to count, quite frankly. We had 20, 20 emails. Twenty, twenty emails. I had a couple of phone calls.
And those were included in the record?
They're all in the, excuse me, they're all in the record.
I, I guess. Just a general summary um for the person today.
Well, so. So um the predominant, um they were predominantly positive. Little troubling that some came from New Hampshire and some came from. Other towns.
Sure.
Some came from, you know, elsewhere, there were several from the community and several from the Maple Avenue. And Apple Street area. But um there, you know, out of all of those, there were a lot that weren't in the neighborhood, but they were supportive with very good. You know, reasons, scientific reasons why beekeeping is important and necessary, that, that just sort of sums up what I got.
Nope, that's her, that's uh yeah, helpful for contextualizing what is already in the record, but for contextualizing for us tonight. With that in mind, now I would ask the members of the public company, would like to come on up.
I don't know proper decorum.
If you could um say your name, um your address here in Scarborough, um and a- again, just. To limit comments to not too much. If you go for twenty minutes, I'm gonna knock you off.
I won't. My name is Ann Stanton, I'm at twenty four Aslan Drive, so I am on the diagram, I'm the property that's behind his garage. So I border directly with that behind the garage and the yard area, that's my driveway, garage, house. Yard, um I'm in favor of this endeavor, I um was thrilled when they came and asked me. Um and my husband, um I feel that they've done their due diligence in finding out what the best practice is. Consulting with neighbors, um to my knowledge, the neighbors that they missed. By mistake the first time around that they've been to since. I. Feel like it's going to be a good learning opportunity for their children, my grandchild to be. The lovely kids in the neighborhood and I really appreciate the fact that in their intention to sell. That they do intend to sell offsite, um we love seeing the kids in the neighborhood and the dogs and all of that, so having more traffic would be tricky. The delivery trucks in our um neighborhood are problem enough, so we don't want any increased traffic if we can avoid it. So I appreciate all the work they've done, all the homework they've done, and I think it's going to be an asset to our community. So um that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll go down the row if you know mine, yeah, seems like the best way to do it.
Oh, good lord, I'm short. Hi, I'm Melanie Jordan Thayer, I live at twelve Aslan Drive, my mother-in-law is the owner of the home, so my name is not on any of that. I came here as a representative for our household to say that we are absolutely in favor of this and we are very excited, as you can see. On the map, we are sharing the vast majority of the property line with Tim. His gardens in his front yard.
On that, you're directed to the left end?
Yep, we're right there, you see that big ugly green square? That's some turf. Hate it, hate it and it looks worse from above. But we are very excited about this bee endeavor, uh you can't really see it because of the. Big ugly tree at the very corner of our lot, that big circle there. We have expanded that garden since, so our garden, one of the complaints I've heard from his micro farm, because I've looked at the public records and the comments and whatnot. Was the fact that he was going to have gardens in his front yard. We have a garden like less than fifty yards away from his and just as close to the road, if not closer to what he is planning. Our garden is going to thrive thanks to his bees, so thank you, Tim. Thank you, much appreciated, we are also looking forward to the education, we have a four-year-old son at home. Who the moment he heard that there were going to be bees in the neighborhood, has been so excited to learn about them. And does not like the fact that I have told him that bees are scientifically not supposed to fly. But I can't explain to him any of that, but Tim will be able to, hopefully, please, for the love of God, answer the questions for me, but. He has assured us that he is getting a proper education on all of this, which is a big concern, I want to make sure that not only is our neighborhood protected, but he is not abusing a species. He's done his research as from the many books and the many, many conversations that we have had about bees and micro farming in the past. God, how long have you been talking about this, a while? He's done his research, I am very much so looking forward to all of it. I'm looking forward to him not selling stuff from his lawn, I don't want people parking on my lawn. And I don't want my kid getting bumped by somebody's car because people want to buy the honey they're lining up across the street. So selling offsite would be the preferable. But I, I'm looking forward to the free honey for babysitting services, right?
We're not here to negotiate quid pro pos, ma'am, but, but we appreciate it, thank you.
But I've got zero complaints.
Hello, everyone, my name is Christine Bressard, I'm not from the neighborhood, but I am in support of this bee farm. As Tim mentioned, seventy percent of our.
Are you a Scarborough resident?
I'm not a Scarborough resident, I am hopeful to be in the coming couple of months, but. I just wanted to come here and support my friends and also to advocate for free honey for babysitting services. But with seventy percent of our bees dying over the winter, we need more families to take up beekeeping, so I wanted to show my support here.
Hi, I'm Secret Serpico, I live in seventeen Aslan Drive, which is right across the street from Tim. And my husband and I both are very much in favor of the beekeeping, we see no problems with that at all. Hopefully, my flowers will benefit from the bees greatly. But um you may realize that a lot of bees actually, I'm, I'm a member of the Scarborough Garden Club as well, and so we've had. Uh many lectures on bees and whatnot, and many of them actually live underground, they dig the holes in the ground, so. We already have a lot of bees, even though they, they don't necessarily come from a hive. We also have a culvert right behind as part of our property, which would be another water source for the bees, which will be wonderful. And we always talk about sustainable Scarborough, while having the. The vegetable beds in the front lawn is a perfect example of where we are heading for the future. As far as getting rid of lengthy lawns and having more productive uses for that area, so I'm. Definitely in favor of what's going to happen, thank you.
Thank you very much. You're not here for this, and I did. Wonderful, thank you very much, I appreciate that, um okay, with that, I see no more members of the public and having already heard. The summary of the um uh public comment elsewhere, I will close public comment. And ask us to start going through the finding. As we typically do on this one, we'll go through each one, one by one, and I'll ask um a member of the, the uh committee. Well, first off, Mr. Morris, if you head back up there. We'll ask you to um go through the um, the, the requirements for the special exception. I hate this because of standards and other requirements. I'm gonna get this wrong. We'll start with A.
Yes, sir.
Let's call it one or two as we go through this, because I do this every time. With A, um the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage. Disposal emissions or the air, the air water or other aspects of its design or operation.
Sir, for brevity's sake, do you mind if I just go through the spark notes and allow for questions?
Please do.
Okay. So yeah, in regards to air and water, everything we're doing is complicit with allowable things already in R two. So in regards to water, um my neighbor hit the nail on the head. Responsible land use, what we're doing is we're using a residential sprinkler system that was already installed for the grass. To water the vegetables, so same water use, it's designed to be responsibly used, it's designed to keep everything. On site, it's just normal household sprinkler, sprinklers that would you find on any other lot in R two.
Specifically for this item, though, you would have no reason to believe that there would be runoff. From your sprinkler system or whatever into municipal sewage systems, that would be.
It has been dialed in to keep all of the water on site, it needs to be as efficient as possible to keep my water bill low. As far as air quality goes, everything we're using is normal household uh residential equipment, I've committed to. Only owning battery equipment, so we're not going to be, in case anyone's not familiar. Uh there is basically no regulation on gas power tools and polluting, it's. A crazy high atrocity, so we're not going to be contributing to that at all, we're committed to just using battery.
Don't take this the wrong way.
Absolutely.
I would like to move this along as quickly as possible, so um.
Yeah, so no, no air and water, any questions?
Thank you very much, any questions? Uh B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity.
That's the opposite of our intention, we're filing this so we don't create that, we want to sell offsite, so there will be no more cars, no more pedestrian traffic, anything like that in our neighborhood.
Perfect. C, and I understand this was one of those things that creates some discussion, um so. A quick answer and then we can ask any questions we need to. The, the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood. Or require substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Okay, so bees are naturally occurring, they're already there. We've sourced intentionally non-aggressive Italian honeybees that have a really low propensity for any kind of aggressive behavior, so there's minimal risk. We are using best practices, already cited all those, I've taken the initiative to educate myself. That's been done, we've reached out to the neighborhood, um I would like to talk to that in detail if that's okay.
Sure.
Great, uh so after the last meeting, one of the, one of the things people brought forward, there was a complaint from a neighbor who is allergic to bees. That's their lot isn't a butter to us, I told the board that I would go talk to them. Immediately after the meeting, that's exactly what I did, the next day I went over, had a discussion with them, they indicated that. After talking with them, they're neutral, if not in support of what we're doing. Told them what I'm doing to mitigate the problems, told them what I'm doing for everyone's safety involved, they seemed pretty responsive to that. They mentioned that it might have been nice if I had knocked on their door and talked to them, so with that advice, I went and I knocked on all. Uh let's see, I have the exact numbers, thirty, forty houses responded, yeah, so I got forty houses to respond. So of the forty houses, I have a ninety-two percent positive or neutral feedback. People, the majority of the letters that came in um for a public comment were from Aslan Drive, so. Of those, yeah, so fourteen letters came in from my neighbors explicitly saying they don't see any public safety hazard. I talked to all of them of the forty houses I talked, forty houses that have responded, three maintained concern. However, I have talked to two of those three now and. I will say it seems murky as to if their concern is public safety or if their concern is they don't like my flower beds.
Without characterizing that any further, um the ninety-two percent is helpful. And uh we appreciate you indicating that what the uh, that there, there were, that there was negative feedback involved. Any questions?
Oops, sorry, I, sorry, sir, one last thing, there was no recorded incidence of bee-related calls to police or fire in the last two years.
Any other questions for this item?
Yes, David. Just a comment, um at the last meeting, um you, we did mention to you that it would be good to get feedback from neighbors. And um I think it's very important that you have done that, thank you.
D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on waters.
Nope, it's a flat lot, we're using raised beds to prevent erosion anywhere, so the lot does slope. After where the raised beds are, so I'm keeping grass there to keep a cover crop, sorry, yeah. Sorry, sir, after the last meeting, I feel the need to talk in detail to all of these things.
I appreciate it, um and uh after reviewing the video of the last meeting, I'm conscious that I want to make sure everybody's tied in and it's used appropriately, so. E, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use. Proximity of other structures and density of development.
Yeah, so for this one, I'd like to just call out an attachment called Gardens of Aslan, I'll leave it at that, it's four pictures of other lots on the street that also have gardens. In the front of their lot and as Melanie said, her garden is basically in my front yard already.
I would also add, and I'll, I'll, I'll allow my um uh board members to comment on this. We love having um comparative pictures and, and um of, of other properties in the neighborhood for these sorts of things. We find a lot of people assert that this is similar to, but when we have photographic evidence to, to understand this. It makes a big difference for us, so we, I appreciate the inclusion of the, of the, of the photographs here.
It was my pleasure, sir.
Any other questions on this one? David?
Mr. Chair, uh yes, I just wanted to comment on this point that um. You, the fact that you are, you have stated uh that you will comply with the Maine Beekeeper Association regarding density. Is a very important point, because that's exactly what this criterion relates to, uh density of use. So that would, that would really satisfy also.
Seeing anything else, F, if located in a shoreline zone, I'll ask. Not located in a shoreline zone, that's what I thought, um so move on. The applicant has sufficient right title or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use, you have provided. The um, the, the, the title information, so.
Property card is in there in the attachment with my name on it.
The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. We have not indicated as of yet that there are any conditions, um but uh. You've spoken already to your technical and financial abilities, but if you could maybe speak briefly to them, just to wrap this up.
Absolutely, so this is by nature accessory in the sense that we're using this as an educational tool, so. This is primarily, the beekeeping and the gardening is primarily for our children, it's not primarily for commercial ag, it's secondary to that. So in that use sense, the majority of what we've done is research, my daughter, my three-year-old and I have read. Honey, four, five, ten books on bees this winter, and I don't mean like kids' books, I mean like she wants to read this with me. Well, I am currently enrolled in a program for Heroes to Hives, I'm a member of the Maine Air National Guard, I qualify as a veteran, so I'm taking a course through the University of Minnesota. Taught by leading bee experts in our field, um I'm currently doing that, I'm also, I've joined the Cumberland County Beekeeper Association. Bunch of really cool bee nerds, I've got a mentor local here in Scarborough to talk local use case. I grew up farming, I've had gardens my whole life, I like plants.
We'll stop.
Sorry, try to keep it short, sir.
Look there, yeah, um but thank you very much, any questions? Seeing none, um and the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation.
Yeah, so as we talked about, we're not buying any tractors, not buying any combines, don't quite have the space for keeping the residential. Use equipment that would already be compatible with any other use in zone R two. The only time we'd ever be renting a gas tool or anything like that that would make noise would be a special exempt, would be. A special situation, in that case, my neighbors would know about it and it would be, again, residential equipment rented from somewhere like Home Depot.
And, and just to be clear, this is Scarborough, this is Maine, I'm sure some or, or many of your neighbors have, say. A backup generator in their, i- in their house, you're, you're not talking about anything that would exceed, say. The gen, the, the, the four watt or ten watt Generac in somebody's backyard.
So I do the majority of, I'm a stay-at-home dad, I do the majority of work with my kids, we're about to have, as you can see, my wife, we're about to have another child. I do the majority of my work with small children strapped to me, which is why I use battery tools, so it's all quiet enough a baby can sleep through it.
Appreciate that, but uh, but noted, so um any other questions, seeing none? Thank you very much, we appreciate your statements and uh we will now go on to our finding.
Mr. Chair, can I? Helen, did we get any hands up or anything? Okay, I, I forgot to check.
Oh, that's.
This is new.
That's right, yeah, you're right, I forgot the whole Zoom, Zoom thing, you're right, good point. Sorry, had there been a, just for the public, had there been a hand raised online from Zoom. We should have gone back on that on public comment, um but we're not wholly used to the Zoom thing here. Since we left it after COVID and went all in person and now we're back to hybrid, we're relearning, so apologies, apologies for that break there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Morris, you can have a seat, uh if we have any further questions. We'll invite you back up, um we'll now go down the row and um indicate our findings of fact. Michelle, can you start with A?
Sure, their proposed use will not create any unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by um. Reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water or aspects of the design uh or operation, so. The applicant seems to have demonstrated a pretty good. You know, knowledge of what it takes to run this business and. This inherently is a sustainable practice, uh having honeybees, so he seems very conscious of. You know, making sure there's no additional sewage or anything like very environmentally friendly. Products that he would use. When, you know, and composting um was mentioned, uh so I see no issue here.
Okay, any comment? That I'll ask for a vote, do we find that the applicant has met the requirements of? Num, number, letter A of the special exception. Uh no, we'll do the roll call then, we'll do hands, hands for this one, by hand? That's a unanimous show of hands, um second, David, if you would take a B?
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions. When added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity. The applicant has testified that there will be no customer traffic at all. Onto the property and the product will be sold offsite, strictly offsite and furthermore, they will ignore employees. Now, I, there is just one thing I would mention, uh is that um the ap, the applicant has. Now, there is just one thing I would mention, uh, is that, um, the app, the applicant has, um. Said that if there's enough production of honey, he would make honey available to neighbors. I'm not sure if that means for sale or, you know, to be given away, but I would assume that you would be delivering it to them. And with that provision, it would make sense. Go ahead.
So if you reference your packet, what I believe Mr. Bork is referencing is the notice that went out to our neighbors that used the word share. Share in that context was meant to, we intend to make small batches of honey to physically just give as just a free. Hello neighbors kind of gift to our neighbors. Um, we will also be selling honey. If Anne, for example, would like to buy honey from me, she is welcome to. If we get to the point of selling, but otherwise we're intending just to give as a gift.
And those would be delivered to the neighbors?
Uh, they, I mean, that's going to be like if Anne was over at my house and she wants one, she can have it. Or if I am walking my daughter and I have one on me, I'll give it to someone, but it'd be like foot traffic.
But it's not going to create a big.
It would, I'm not going to buy a delivery truck and be delivering free honey around our neighborhood. No.
And my, 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 my only comment on this one actually might be as a special exception, and I know. We're not going to regulate it, but it sounds like the neighbors would self-regulate this, which is why I think we might make this a condition to the special exception. That there not be run a stand or a, a, a sale operation on-site.
I would be happy to commit to that, sir. If you don't want to make an exception, I'm happy to verbally just tell you, if you approve me, we will not be selling on-site.
Well, no, and, and partly, again, I'm looking to your neighbors and your neighbors are trying to avoid traffic on the streets. So we're not putting a burden on the code enforcement office, um, for monitoring that there is not, um, this effectively. If you, if you put a stand up in front and was creating problems, your neighbors will call Brian and tell him that you violated the terms of your special exception.
Melanie would physically attack me then. Yes, probably call Brian. Yes, sir.
I'm not too worried, but, but, but I, I, I offer it up as kind of something that, that. And again, hearing the concerns addressed by the public about traffic in the neighborhood in particular, that's what I agree on it. And again, I know Brian hates having things that he can't enforce directly. But it does sound like the neighbors are in alignment for enforcing not putting up a Sally Van Pelt stand and saying, you know, honey for five cents with. Whatever.
Mr. Chair, I wasn't asking for, uh, you know, any kind of, of, you know, condition to be added here. I would simply want clarification from Mr. Morris.
No, 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 I was suggesting independently, David. No, no, that, 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 that was all me.
Yeah. Okay. So, no, I, I, I think we're okay here.
Okay, got it. Yeah, the suggestion added, if we don't feel that that's necessary. Then I'm seeing a lot of shaking heads, so that's fine.
I think he's made it pretty clear that he's not going to sell it at the house. That's why he wants this whole exception. I don't see the need for that personally.
Then if I could see a show of, do we, I think we're ready for a show of hands on, on, that we're ready for, uh, that, um. That B has been met. Is he showing his? That's five to nothing for B. Yes. Kyle?
Criteria C is the public safety criteria. I think that, uh, this application satisfies both of the prongs. The first prong being that the proposed use will not create public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood. Because beekeeping is already allowed. It's already an existing use in the neighborhood. Second, that the proposed use would require a substantially different, excuse me, a sub- substantially greater degree. In municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. And I think that, um, this criteria is satisfied. We can find that it's satisfied from the fact that there haven't been police or. Fire department complaints elsewhere in town about bees.
Agreed. The other point, I, 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 one of the members of the public made this point. Bees live in Scarborough underground all the time. I mean, and, and certainly on my property and, and if I, if you go into any forested area. You will encounter bees during the season because they're everywhere. So, um. I, I, I think the first part of this is, is, is met by the fact that, that we live in an area that thankfully bees thrive in. And, uh, and to your point, Kyle, I, I think we've, we've agreed that, that the evidence more than suggests that there is no great degree of fire. Do we have any other comments on this one?
I have one comment, just that if you do encounter people that are allergic like your neighbor is, they have a responsibility to, to. Knowing that they have this allergy to protect themselves with Epi pens and all the. Other types of antihistamines, that kind of thing. It may be wise for you to have something on hand. Should somebody you know develop a allergy that you don't know, but otherwise, like the safety aspect of. From an allergy standpoint is not really a responsibility outside of your home. Cause they can get a bee sting anywhere.
And agreed, and to, 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 to that same point, Michelle, that bees are already out there. So they, they have a positive responsibility for themselves to, to do that, so. Any other comments? Seeing none. Um, by show of hands, has the applicant demonstrated, um, uh, compliance on this one? It's five to nothing. Thank you. The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. Uh, as indicated by the applicant, this is using, uh, usual, um, uh, sort of home gardening and, and, uh, and, and home. Vegetable raising, water usage, um, and that there's no additional runoff that would be created on this into the sewage system. So I feel that there's no further discussion needed here. Any questions on this one? Show of hands that the applicant has met this requirement? That is five to nothing. Uh, Jeff?
Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity. You can talk to the other structures and exit the building. Mr. Morris provided us with.
Provided us with, provided us with, uh, multiple pictures of other properties within the neighborhood. With gardens, uh, that are very similar, uh, in design to what he's proposed to use. And we've also heard from neighbors who, uh, just next door, uh, have, have gardens in their front yard. So I, I think it clearly meets this, uh, criteria.
Any other comments on this one? David?
Yes, I, I really think it's important to note that, uh, Mr. Morris has made a commitment to have no more than, uh, two hives on the property. Which should be in compliance with the standards established by the Maine Beekeepers Association, which fulfills the intensity requirement.
And just to be clear, uh, he has, um, uh, uh, committed to. Fulfill, uh, to meeting the standards of the beekeeping community, but that's really what we're getting to. I, I, I think. It's the idea that the intensity is, is governed by.
Intensity is, is what this.
And, and the intensity is, is defined by experts who understand how bees interact and, and he's committed to observing those standards.
Right.
Yeah, agreed totally.
I, I will also add that those are recommendations. Recommendations change all the time, so we don't have to hold him to that right now. But he is in, upholding.
No, I agree. And it's one of the reasons why I wanted to clarify that it wasn't to two, to, 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 two highs today. It's, it's to, the standards is applied by the Beekeeper Association and, and we do trust them. I, 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 we, I think we as residents and as citizens of Maine have to trust them. So, agreed. Any other concerns on that one? Seeing none. Can I see a show of hands that this has been met? Joe, your, Joe is good. Okay. Um, we have now, of course, the shorelands. We will accept as written that it's not in the shoreline and move on. The applicant has sufficient right and title in the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use. I believe there's no question that that exists here. If I see a show of hands, that's five. Yes. Uh, Michelle, number H, letter H.
The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals. Pursuant to subsection five of this section. So we agreed we're not going to do any, um, special, um, conditions. And I mean, he's shown that he's very knowledgeable, done a lot of research, has the financial ability, the land. The technical ability was not a question in my mind from that presentation. And, um, you know, I think he's a continued learner and, um, this seems to meet the standard for me.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
As, as he alluded to, Mr. Morris alluded to, he will be required to get a food handler's license, which is, he, he's waiting to get. Approval here first, but he will be doing that. So just, I wanted to add that as the part of that, part of that to.
Correct. And then he has a plot, or he is applying in line with the sequencing and all the rest. Very, very, very good. Um, very well noted. So, um, do we agree that he has met the requirements of H? I see all five hands. Great. And finally, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to generation of hour of noise. And hours of, of operation. As we've indicated, these using, um, uh, power equipment in line with. Other ta, other, um, gardens, other lawn, um, care, et cetera. And probably less than that than my, uh, generator produces, which it went into test mode this afternoon and scared the hell out of me. So, uh, I believe this is, this is a net. If I see a show of hands. That is five to nothing. Then I believe we have gone through the requirements for the special exception. Do I have a motion to approve the appeal for special exception? David?
Thank you. I second that motion.
Thank you. Kyle, any further discussion? If we can call the roll for the vote.
Michelle Stevenson?
Yes.
David Bork?
Yes.
Cal Nudin?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
And Joe Dory.
Yes.
And special exception, uh, special exception twenty-seven sixty-nine has been approved. Thank you very much. Moving on to seventy-two. Yes. Appeal number twenty-seven seventy-two, a special exception appeal by Daniel Mays, Frith Farm, Frith Farm, correct? Uh, sixty-one Ash Swamp Road. We've seen you before, I believe. Come on back. You're the, you are a repeat contestant.
Yes, thank you. Daniel Mays, Frith Farm, sixty-one Ash Swamp Road. I'm a little embarrassed to take up more of your time because I was just here in January, so I appreciate your patience. As I, um, basically realized that my previous appeal was designed for my current needs. But actually, I think a question was posed here of why, why only this size? And I realized that that sort of got me thinking over the next couple of months of, I really should be planning for future needs and expansion of the farm. Especially since the construction will take several years of this, um, project. So that's, that's why I'm back with it, with a new and expanded, uh, version of the, the same project. Appreciate it. Um.
I have a question for Brian. Um, this is an interesting one because. Did we approve just that property last time? Or did we approve a general special exception for workforce housing on the, on the, on the property?
The proposal last time, um, did include other properties, one of which. Mr. Um, Mays owns and, and will. Adjoin to this property and one that he will acquire for the septic system.
Okay.
And so that was part of the approval. And just so the board knows, I did, I did talk to Daniel when he called me and asked. Here's what I'm thinking. What do you think? Can I do this with the previous approval?
Yeah.
And I, I, I approached the town attorney with that question. As I always try to do to make sure that we're all on solid footing. I don't want to get the board into any trouble, nor do I want to get myself into any trouble. So, uh, we talked about it at length and it was decided that it was significantly different enough to that. And it's in keeping, if, if the board, I don't know if many of you were on the board, but we've had several special exceptions that came back for an amended special exception. Cause they wanted to add an activity or a building or something that changed the scope of what they had originally applied for. Not, not necessarily a big change, but big enough that it did require a second look and a second approval. And the attorney's advice was that this was that. It was significantly, now we're talking about multiple buildings instead of. I think it was one, one building originally.
Yep.
Multiple buildings, cabins, a, a, a bath house kind of situation. Significantly different than what was proposed. The, the intent is still the same. It's still agricultural employee housing, but it just has a different footprint.
Cause my thing is, is I don't want to lock the applicant into a design for a special exception. Cause the exception really, the special exception use is work for, is, is agriculture employee house. And, and, and to do that in one specific design might be overly restrictive. And, and so should we approve up to a number of units? Should we approve up to a square footage of construction?
I think, why not just approve the application that's before us? And if there's any, you know, immaterial changes, then the applicant can discuss that with Brian and your town attorney.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, what I would suggest is, is kind of going along with, with what Kyle says as well. I would, I think it's incumbent upon the board to review and either approve or deny the application that's in front of them. As far as the actual footprint, uh, number of stories. I think that the key piece is here, and this might be a question you want to pose to the applicant. Is twelve bedrooms going to satisfy the needs for the foreseeable future? So we could approve a configuration of twelve bedrooms, a combination of. One-room cabins, a combination of multi-family type situations.
And partially, I anticipate probably more a special exception request of this type going forward. And it's to provide some guidance to you for when you bring them to us for approval. What the scope or what the, the context of that request, those requests should be in the future. We've seen a couple, and like I said, I, I don't anticipate this being the last. Um, so that, that's really the nature of my question.
Yeah, and it's a good question, but I, you know, again, I think, I think where we kind of have to stick is. What is the application in front of us? And then if needs change, situations change and another building has to be added, more bedrooms. More footprint. I think, again, as, as has been past practice, you come back and just get an amendment to that.
No, it's, and, and maybe we can follow up offline and, and this might be a long-range planning conversation about, um, about how we. How we scope requests for, um, seasonal workforce housing. In, 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 in a way that doesn't tie us up and tie a develop, or tie a, a property owner up in repeat. Processes like this. So that's it is, but I think Kyle, to your point, the right thing to do for tonight is to look at the four corners of this proposal and just move forward. But thank you for that discussion. I appreciate it. Um, okay, we've got that. We have. Any general questions at this point for the applicant? Seeing none. Uh, we have no public here, uh, folks internally. I will ask now, do we have any hands up on Zoom? We have no hands up on Zoom. Um, and do we have any, it is Zoom, right? We're not on Teams or anything like that. It's Zoom. Okay, got it. And, uh, do we have, uh, any, um, uh, email or a butter feedback or anything?
Uh, I've had no written comments, uh, or phone calls.
Okay, then with that in mind, I think, and having heard at least a version of this in the past. What I'd like to propose is we just go through the criteria for the exception and move quickly with it. So for A, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage. Sewage disposal emissions to the air or water, other aspects of the design or operation.
Uh, yes, it won't because, uh, getting a subject design done by Kopey Environmental already had a design done. This will need a expanded design. Um, I've had some back and forth with him. It doesn't look like that'll be an issue. I didn't want to pay for that design before going. In front of you all.
Understood.
Yeah.
Got it, but you are going forward with it, assuming you get approval, you, you will review the approval and you will review the original Kopey and. Scoping of that and, and make sure that you don't need a bigger leaching.
Yes, we probably will need a bigger leach field and we will go through that design with Chris Kopey. And that would be required by permitting.
B, the proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in the vicinity?
Yeah, these are, this, his housing for employees will work on-site, so they will, will not add to commuter traffic. Whatever entering and exiting they do outside of work hours will be on the existing farm road entrance.
Excuse me. See, the proposed use will not create, uh, public safety problems, which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood. Or require substantially greater degree in municipal. And, and what I say is, uh, say here, Daniel, uh, or Mr. Mays. Any deltas from the prior application, because obviously we've, we've heard these before and we approved findings of fact based on that one. Any significant deltas probably are all that you need to address for this.
Sure. No, this is the same responses last time.
Uh, proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies.
Same, I think, pretty much the same response as last time. It's not near any body of water. Uh, it's pretty relatively flat land.
Great. Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to physical. Proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures and density of development.
Yeah, even with the added, um, you know, structures, uh, the expanded design, it's still, you know, less dense if you look at the distance from it to adjacent. Uh, structures than other.
What was the total size of the property?
Um, the property, well, it's a little complicated because I'm conveying part, so that currently it's fourteen acres.
Yeah, okay.
Um, with twenty six acres of budding conveying four of those twenty six, so it will become.
Okay, we're we're not, it it and I remember the 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 visual on this, we're not talking about. You're now putting four new structures on a two acre property. This is.
No, I'm right. And visually you can't, you won't even be able to see them.
They're behind the farm.
From neighbors' houses.
Yeah. Uh, um, Mr. CEO, Shoreland?
Uh, Mr. Chair is not in the shoreline.
That's what I thought. Um, gee, you have the sufficient right title or you are acquiring the and and have the, um, ability to acquire the sufficient right.
Yes, same answer as last time. I own both properties that will be conveying part of one to the other. Uh, same answers last time with the neighbor, a portion of the neighbor's land, uh, she's agreed to can, uh, to sell it for the leach field site.
And finally, or not finally, H, the you have the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section. Um, nothing's changed in terms. Terrific. And your proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood. No change from the prior application.
Correct.
Terrific. Okay, um, with that, then, there's a seat. And we'll go through this hopefully quickly one by one. Michelle, start us with A.
You weren't kidding. Okay, hold on. Sorry, let me get back. Uh, the proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by, um, reason of sewage disposal emissions to air or water. With the aspect of design and operation, um, I mean, there'll be an uptick. Just given that there'll be more people living on the property at this point, um, but it does not. You know, it's, it's already. Used for the same purpose that he's. Asking for now, um, just with some more buildings. Um, yeah.
I'd also observe that the the requirement is it will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions. He's going to install a compliant sewage system and and leach field. Um, the the property as a agricultural property already has access to water as required. Um, it, the the unhealthful and unsanitary conditions in particular, I don't think are. An issue for this.
No, I mean, in the plans, it looks like he's, you know, taking that into consideration, so. I would say that he's met this criteria.
Any other comments from board? A show of hands if the applicant has met this requirement? Thank you. B, Mr. Bort?
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions. When added to existing conceivable traffic in the vicinity. Um, the housing will be, uh, cited on farm property and. Uh, for use only for seasonal, uh, farm work employees. And they will live at work on the property and there'll be minimal, uh, you know, traffic going in and out and it will be on. The main entrance, you know, to the property, uh, so this will not have any substantial impact. On the traffic conditions.
The other comment from the board, seeing none, a show of hands, the applicant has met this requirement? Five to nothing. Thank you. Um. C.
Um, criteria, criteria C, the public safety criteria. Um, I think that we should make findings that this criteria is. Satisfied, the proposed use will not create public safety problems that would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood because. This is a minor addition of low density, low intensity residential buildings. Nor will it require a substantially greater degree, uh, in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood. Uh, for the same reason.
Agreed. Now I'll add to that the town has made a commitment to workforce housing in general. And that includes the commitment to meet any marginal additional, um, needs for, uh, 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 fire, police protection, et cetera. Um, and therefore, uh, this is well within what would be expected for the RF district. So, um, are there any other comments? Seeing none, a show of hands that the applicant has met this requirement. That's five, nothing. Thank you. Uh, the proposed use will not, D, the proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. Um, as indicated, this is not a material change from the prior, um, application. And, uh, and therefore there's no expectation that it would have a material difference in, um, sedimentation erosion. So I believe that they have met. This requirement. Um, any further discussion? None. Can I see a show of hands that they have met Earth's requirement? That's five, nothing. Thank you. E, Joe.
Proposed use is essentially a continuation of the existing use, expansion over time. Um, and so the proposed buildings that are that are going on on the property are going way in the back of the property. Only visible from the street, um, won't have any, uh, substantial change from.
Agreed. And and it's a, an expansion of some significant size on a very large piece of property. So for a density perspective. Clear this is fine. So any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would the board like to see the revised, um. Combined footprint of forty three hundred square feet, approximately forty three hundred square feet added to that finding?
I would, I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean. What was, yeah, it definitely be approximately, it won't time to that, but it's not ten thousand square feet.
Correct. At the same time, it's not forty thousand, forty, forty three hundred point zero zero. It's forty three and ten is fine.
I think just, just again to to back up what you're you're finding.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's right. So seeing that with that, um, sort of clarification, uh, can I see a show of hands? This has been met. There we go. Um, uh. Shoreland Zone, show of hands. This has been met. Thank you. I love the Shoreland Zone. Um, sufficient right title and interest, Michelle?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, he had to prove that he had the sufficient right title and interest and, um, he has provided us with. Um, you know, I did, he he has a. Like a, is it a verbal from the neighbor saying that for the field or has that gone through?
Uh, no, we're waiting on this.
Okay, so, um, that's a little on the iffy side for me, but it sounds like it's, you know, pretty much in the works. That he'll get that, um, uh, you know, title piece, um, for that piece of land and he had already has the. Um, rest of the land, um, and what am I missing to add?
Shall I make a good question? If I could ask the applicant, have you talked with the butter, um, that you're. You're getting the conveyance from about the expansion and are they still okay with making the conveyance with the adjusted?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, do you have alternative plans for that placement? Should that fall through?
Oh.
We can't do it?
Oh, no, no, we just came to the podium because we were, yeah. He needs a bike too.
That's fair. Um, so like, should that fall through? Do you have any alter- alternate plans for that?
Yes, I guess it depends how it falls through. Um, if she can't convey it, then we could look into an easement maybe, um. If if she changes her mind out of the blue, um, we could apply for a variance. Um, for some of the soils that aren't quite as well drained, um, that are on my property. Um, so those are the backup plans, but she's, you know, we've gone as far as drafting a a bill of sale that she's ready to sign, so we're just sort of waiting.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, so, um, I am okay with saying that he's met this, um, to have sufficient right title and interest to the site of proposed. Knowing that if he can't get that piece, there's alternate. Things he can do to make that on the what he currently has.
Understood. Yep. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Do we agree, uh, with Michelle that we, that the applicant has met this requirement? We do. Um, David?
Uh, H, the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and to comply with the conditions. Imposed, uh, by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this, uh, section. Uh, the applicant has, again, on the, uh, the previous, uh, application, which was approved. You know, showed us that he has the, uh, technical and financial ability to do this and nothing has changed.
You're not shipping all of your goods to China for a hundred and four percent tariff, right? Yeah, okay, just making sure. Um, any other questions? Uh, do we agree that they've met this re- requirement? We do. And then finally, the, uh, I will take Kyle Thunder, Kyle, um, I.
Oh, I I'm honored. Um, I think criteria I, we should make findings that this criteria is met. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation because. The existing uses in the neighborhood are rural, agricultural and residential, and that's what, uh, these proposed uses are.
Any other comments? Do we agree that item I has been met? We have five to nothing. Terrific. Do I have a motion to approve then appeal? Uh, let me get the number, uh, David, uh, motion appeals, uh, uh, for twenty seven seventy two. Do you have a second? Michelle, we have a second. Uh, if, uh, Doreen would call the roll, we appreciate.
Michelle Stevenson?
Yes.
David Bort?
Yes.
Kyle Noonan?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
And Joe Dory?
Yes.
The appeal is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. You bet. Um, with that, we have no more, um, uh, items on the agenda tonight, other than any comments from board members. Or from staff?
Let board members go first. Any comments? I just have a few, um, just to note, um, the decisions that we did for last time, I think we wrote those up with. Kyle's, uh, as vice chairman for signature, the one that you haven't signed is the, um, appeal. Uh, administrative appeal.
Okay.
That was, that you voted on earlier tonight. That's got your name on it too, so.
Okay.
I think Dory either has a copy with her, she can sign before you leave, say, if you're coming back in.
Sure.
I just wanted to point that out since you weren't here, we 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 put his name on.
No, gladly to not be associated with administrative appeal.
And, um, Dorian has just handed me something hot off the press. Uh, there is a a local planning boards and boards of appeal workshop. Um, put on by Maine Municipal Association at the Hilton Garden Inn. In Freeport on July twenty ninth from four to eight thirty P M. If anybody is. Wants to check their calendar and see if that interests them, uh, we can take care of that for you. We can get you registered and 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 pay the, uh, registration fee.
If you haven't done one of those recently, highly recommend it. Um, I try to do that every few years, just to.
So to follow on with that, I did speak with our our attorney from Bernstein Insurance, Phil Saucier, who you all have had. Asked him if he might be interested in doing a special training for the board. Um, I know Michael isn't here tonight, but he's a new board member.
Yeah.
Um, it's good refresher. Um, we also have a new town clerk who would like to go through that, that, uh, Freedom of Access. Act information, because Phil always does five or ten minutes on that. So I wanted to put it out to the board if you were interested. Phil has our next meeting date of May fourteenth.
Yep.
Uh, available. We would meet an hour, hour and a half prior to, if any, whoever can make it, we would meet in the. Uh, town manager's conference room because the, um, ordinance committee meets here earlier.
Yep.
So we could do that. Nice. I'll have some food, uh, for everybody. Um, if if, can I get a consensus on the board whether that's of. The food nails it every time.
So I I think that's a good idea. We have done it a few years. Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Uh, so I I can confirm that with him then.
Yep.
Boards.
I can likely make it around six. I have to work and then pick my kids up.
I understand and we, yeah, I think six probably will give us an hour. Um, I like to allow at least enough time for questions because sometimes that's what. The board really wants to do is ask questions and.
Yep.
And, uh, but yeah, I can, I can certainly see if we can keep it to an hour and.
Okay, great. Go that way.
Okay, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, so, uh, any other? Questions, comments? Terrific. Then do I have a motion to adjourn? David, thank you.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Kyle. Uh, all in favor? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.